For your time and your consideration, and I look forward to working with you guys on future events.
Great, thank you Lindsay.
No problem.
Okay, we'll move on to item two, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Power DMS, a software product for the police department's document and policy management.
Mayor, good evening.
How are you?
I'm doing very well, thank you.
Great.
Again, Power DMS Document Management System is a policy and compliance management platform that will allow us to create, edit, compare, organize, and distribute policies from a secure cloud-based site to our employees. Additionally, it will provide a level of transparency to make our department policies available to our citizens through a link on the existing current website.
Okay. Questions at all for Jeff on this? Dave, anything you want to add?
No, I think he's hit it. The only other thing that I would add is that this will allow us not only to be a little bit more transparent to the public and more informative and collaborative with our staff, but it will also assist them with the accreditation that they're seeking as well.
Great. Sure.
Does this replace the current software system that we're using that citizens can get into to see reports, or does it work in conjunction?
No, no, it's a separate connection, yes ma'am. It's a different portal, yeah.
Other questions? Okay, we'll move on to item three, which is approval of the terms of a policy revision to the Smyrna Police Department's pre-employment qualifications.
Yes ma'am, this is kind of a part of an ongoing process, and we've been working to clarify and clean up some language in our current policy regarding pre-employment and our hiring process overall. We do this in an effort to ensure that through a well-documented and fully transparent hiring process, we're able to attract, identify, and hire best possible candidates. A part of this, part of the upgrades in this particular pre-employment qualification policy, excuse me, are, as part of this process, we've identified some specific disqualifiers, and we've added them to this policy. Disqualifiers such as drug use, habitual and serious traffic offenses, violations, criminal convictions, financial responsibilities, actually put that in the policy as opposed to, and instead of being broad on that and just vague on it.
We have the red line version in our packet.
Yes ma'am.
Did you all have any questions or comments?
I do have one question.
Sure.
Can you talk a little bit about the written test process?
Yes ma'am.
Because I know there was, a year or so ago, there was a class that came through, there were 14 applicants, I think five of the 14 didn't pass the written portion, and I know that we're one of the only departments in the area that does a written test, like Murfreesboro, the county, the state, and I think Metro, none of them do that.
I'm not sure about what process has other agencies utilize. I know we've utilized, we use Standard and Associates, which is, which compiles our tests for us. Again, we, and again, it's over basic, it's not even police knowledge, really, I mean, it's some basic communication.
Right, it's more like an aptitude test.
It's an aptitude test, yes sir. We've had fairly good luck with it. It does trip some people up, it has historically tripped some people up over the years, but again, I think it's a good beginning stage to kind of start to weed out folks that may not have that aptitude.
Yeah, my only concern with it would be that, you know, that we may be disqualifying good candidates before they even get to the point of even being able to talk to someone, right? Because it's pretty much the second step in the process.
That first step gets quite a few as well, yes sir.
Before they ever even get an oral interview or anything, they're pretty much immediately disqualified, and other departments aren't using that. So, that's my only concern. I would like for us to maybe take those and have a conversation, understanding that, you know, maybe they missed it by so many points, but still, let's talk to them and find out, is this someone who just doesn't take standardized tests well? Or is this someone who actually has an aptitude issue, right? Rather than just, because we're having trouble getting the candidates and keeping candidates, I kind of hate to kick some out that we haven't even talked to.
Yes sir, and again, we're open to...
If they've come forward and applied, we probably need to give them every opportunity we can to see if we can make them work.
Right, and it is, it is a high standard. I mean, again, we maintain a extremely high standard.
Yeah, and I don't think we should lower standards, but we just need to make sure that we're not excluding folks arbitrarily just because of one, you know, like I said, somebody may not test well, they may be perfectly fine, but they just don't test well, and it's a written test.
I understand, some people don't talk well in front of crowds. I get it, believe me.
Other comments or questions on this?
So, the written, just to make sure I'm understanding what you're talking about. So, this, the written part is like the second step, you said that there's a lot that goes into the first step, so are there, is there dialogue or questioning that's done with those individuals before you get to this stage?
On the, on the front end, in the application process, they're given a packet basically telling them exactly what our process will entail, and what it looks like, each step of our process, all the way through from our initial application process, to the phone conversations that are had with them, to schedule them, to the physical, the PT test, the physical portion where they have to successfully complete our obstacle course at a designated time, to the written test, to the oral interview, to the background investigation. They're explained all that at the beginning of the process, yes ma'am.
Okay.
Basically just did the steps right there, it's in that order.
In that order.
So, you do the physical part, you know, that's, that's one thing, right? You might have somebody that can pass the physical part, there are some people that can't pass that, but there are some people that can, but then they get, go very next step as to the written part, and it's a, it's an aptitude test, much like an ASFAB or a small ACT or SAT. It has nothing to do with policing, it's about English and grammar and math, and although those are important qualities, and I think you probably have to be able to do a lot of that well to be able to write a report, et cetera, there could still be situations where we're, if they've passed the psychological, they passed the physical, and then they missed the cutting score by one point, they're kicked out.
So, is the psychological before the written?
No ma'am, the psychological is well into the process. It's after we've given a conditional offer of employment, they've gotten through a background investigation, and a conditional offer of employment, and then we send them for a psychological and a medical examination.
Okay. And so, you, like I said, I'm just trying to understand, so you were saying that other departments don't use any type of written that you know of?
That's right, they don't, I know Metro, I know, I talked to Brett, and I know the county doesn't, and I know Murfreesboro doesn't.
So, they don't have any type of written?
I don't know if they have any type, they don't use an aptitude test. Yeah, I don't know what they might do, but they don't use an aptitude test as a disqualifier. So, they may even still have the aptitude test, but maybe they don't have a score you have to meet, right? I don't know how they, it's not, there's not a test where you have to score a certain score to move forward.
Okay.
Would it be helpful to see a copy of the test before, you know, judge a test?
Yeah, sure, and I'm not trying to get into the middle of it, I just want to make sure that...
That might create, and again, obviously you guys are subdue to anything, but I'm sorry, sir.
No, you're fine. So, I'd be happy to review that with the chief and find out, you know, again, agreeing with you, council member, that we don't want to lower our standard, but are we doing something above and beyond what is, I don't want to say necessary, but not in line with what folks out there around us are doing? So, I can look at that with him and get back with you and let you know if there's something out of bounds, or tweak it, or lower the test score. Are we asking for a 1300 on the SAT, or are we looking for a 1050, you know? So, those types of questions, I can certainly find out more.
Yeah.
Other questions?
All the redlining, that has, does that go through Mr. Peach's office, or how does that happen? So, you've already seen all the redlining, okay. I didn't know if it had started there and then come to us and then go to you.
Yeah, to be able to get on the agenda, to get to Mr. Santucci, it comes to all of us first.
Comes to you too, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Item four is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Waypoint Business Solutions LLC for the procurement, installation, and configuration of two new data storage systems. Hey Carl?
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. Yeah, we are requesting to procure and install two new storage systems. Due to the town's continued growth, plus our retention policies, our data is growing at a very rapid rate. These new units will store our unstructured data in a much more efficient and cost-effective manner than the way we've been doing it for the last couple of years. And this is actually going to be a different model, this is a capacity-on-demand model, so it'll be a five-year agreement, but we'll make annual payments only on the capacity of the system we utilize. So, that helps make it much more cost-effective than buying an extremely large system that sits unused and you're paying for unused capacity. So, this is a budgeted capital expenditure for this fiscal year, and if approved, we just need to make sure that the next four years get budgeted in the annual budget as well. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Anything for Carl on this? Okay, we'll put that on the agenda.
Thank you.
Move on to item five, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute change order number one with S&amp;W Contracting Company for the Genie Lane Extension Street Lighting. Hey Charles?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The original contract with S&amp;W, we led it back in May of '24 so we could get the seven streetlight fixtures and base underway, because it's like a 12-month lead time, but we're fortunate that they have come in in six months, so they are on the ground here. Now, Middle Tennessee Electric, they have finished their new electrical layout, and this change order is for the electrical plan for those associated items with the installation.
Questions for Charles on this? Is this kind of normal process?
Well, these, now, with like I said, the lead time, I know it was the mast arms with the traffic signals which will run to, in that, on Jefferson's like a 20-week, but Middle Tennessee Electric's saying now on streetlight fixtures, they're up to 18 months out.
Wow.
So, I don't know if that's due to hurricanes or production, but they were surprised that we already had our streetlights in.
Okay. Any questions for Charles on this? Okay, then we will add that to our agenda and move on to item six, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal agreement with Cigna Healthcare for the town's employee health, vision, and dental plans, and stop-loss coverage for the calendar year 2025. Hey Jeff?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, you've got before you tonight our renewal with Cigna Healthcare for our calendar year 2025, for our health insurance plan for employees, that includes our dental vision plan, as well as our stop-loss insurance premium. They're once again locking their fixed rates, their third-party administrator rates, and the network fees at no increase, but there is a small increase to our stop-loss insurance premium. The actual map's actually a little bit less than what's in the summary there, it's 116, 152. The majority of this increase is going to be offset that we're getting a larger amount of our pharmacy rebates than we used to get, so for the most part, it is a flat renewal.
Okay. Questions for Jeff on this? Okay, we'll move on to item seven, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute change order number four for the 1R lift station project. Hey Mike?
Hello, how are you?
Great.
Good. So, as you said, this is change order number four. This change order does consist of a couple of items. The first, when we had the event where we had the leak there, that Combi is doing a lot of stuff to, you know, replace controls and stuff like that, the structural engineer, while it didn't damage the concrete, the header moved slightly, and he recommended doing some additional concrete support where in the future, if this happened and it was worse, it would protect everything, keep the pumps in place and keep them running. The other one, we were going to repurpose the newest of the VFDs that we had. When Trans Electric hooked it up, it was showing issues, so we need to go ahead and purchase a new VFD for that third pump instead of repurposing one of the old ones.
Questions for Mike on either one of these items?
Where's the 1R lift station?
It is behind, right at the corner of Jefferson Pike and Sam Ridley, behind Ace Hardware.
Gotcha.
Other questions? Okay, we'll put that on the agenda and move on to item eight, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a rental agreement with the Oregon Museum of Science and Industry for the Happy Brain Exhibit. Hey Mike?
Mayor and Council, happy to announce that part of this is going to be, or most of this will be funded by a $50,000 HCA Healthcare Foundation grant that we just received, so we're pretty excited about that, and they've coordinated, staff's coordinated the rental of the Happy Brain Exhibit, which is a bilingual exhibit that targets younger-aged children with adult interaction. Exhibit cost is $40,000 plus shipping, the exhibit will be on site from May to September. I can tell you that Courtney Morgan, SOAC managers, worked hard on the grant and defined an exhibit that was health-related and within the budget. So, the actual one that we were going after got rented before we could sign a contract on it, so we've got this one in the works for the summer. So, we're pretty excited about being able to offset those costs with a grant.
How much do you anticipate shipping to be?
It's usually 4,500, somewhere in there. It's one trailer, yeah.
So, the grant should pretty much cover everything?
Should, yes.
Good work.
Other questions for Mike? Okay, we'll put that on the agenda and move on to item nine, which is consideration of an ordinance amending the text of the Smyrna Municipal Zoning Ordinance, Article Four, Section 4.070, Plan Development Regulations, Second Reading. Kevin, it's taken us a while to get to this point, hasn't it?
Yes, just Mayor and Council, these are our, the proposed zoning ordinance amendments to implement the changes we've been talking about for our design standards for our planned residential developments, PRDs. Within Section 4.070, the changes affects specifically Section 4.076. We're changing that, the existing 4.076, renumbering it to 4.077, amending 4.073, and then a new Section 4.076 is being added. None of this is, nothing has changed since we looked at this on first reading. Again, we will look at, I will, do have a presentation we're going to be doing at the council meeting for the council, as well as everyone in the audience and on television, kind of explaining what PRDs are, what they, kind of in general what they are, and then also specifically to the changes that we're talking about here. We use a lot of this that we have, you all have already seen, as when we were going through our proposed changes, but we'll have some additional information in that as well, so...
Kevin, how long ago did we start this?
Hmm, I don't know, six, eight months, maybe, something like that.
So, I mean, we have hashed it out pretty good, we've had multiple meetings between council, we've had developers there, we've, you all have done a ton of work as staff in trying to bring us information from different communities, and then we had joint planning commission meetings with council, so I feel like we've really tried to get a good plan in place with PRDs, but in addition to that, we still have the flexibility on planning or on council to tweak things even further, so I appreciate the hard work that you all have put in to bring us something forward. I will tell you that in talking to other mayors across the middle Tennessee area, they're very interested in what we're putting together, because I think they're all kind of looking for something when it comes to PRDs.
The middle Tennessee area in general, obviously, are dealing with a lot of the same issues, so...
Absolutely. So, Council, any questions? We're not changing anything from first to second reading, and we will have, Kevin is going to do the presentation for the, for the public to see everything we've kind of been talking about, but is there any, is there anything you want to add at this point?
I just had one comment, and the section that talks about the lot sizes, the chart that you guys have there says, small, medium, and large, 7,000, 9,000, 11,000. It says percentage of lots within the development maximum of 40%. I don't think, it should be minimum. We don't want to tell them they can't have more than 30% 11,000 square foot lots, or 30% 9,000 square foot lots. We do want to minimize the small lots, so it might make sense for the 7,000, but the 9 and 11, based on this, you couldn't have a PRD with more than 30% 11,000 square foot lots.
No, it's just the minimum 30% on the 11,000.
Oh, I do see that, it says minimum, it says maximum on the 9,000, okay.
Yeah, the maximums, I think, are there to make sure that there's no more than...
No more than...
No more than 40% 7,000.
Right, so is that, I guess, I know we did that on 7,000, but on the 9,000, did we, I guess we did say that, 30% is the maximum?
Yeah, and of that first batch, the 40%, I know that Kevin said, you know, in lieu of the density, perhaps on larger tracks, was it 50% of the 40% could wind up being a townhome product?
Could potentially be townhome.
Yeah, okay, all right, now I think you're right, okay. Thank you.
And to your point too, Mayor, these meetings were publicly attended as well, we had some people from the public that showed up at that too.
Okay, any questions or comments on this?
Mayor?
Sure.
Thank you. One of the things that I talked to Mr. Riggsby about is, is finding out from this point in time until the approximate time in which this would actually be approved, what might come before you from a PRD perspective? And I think, Kevin, if I'm correct, there was about three potentially that would come before this council in between that timeframe?
Yes.
And that would be, excuse me, I'm sorry, did we say, end of March would most likely go into effect?
If we did, 90 days, yes.
90 days, yeah.
And I think 90 days is a fair amount of time, I mean, don't you guys, that's usually kind of our standard.
Well, the discussion that's taking place before the 90 days right now, that's plenty of warning for people, I think, to understand that this is coming, or something like this is coming, right?
Right, but I would also hope that staff would encourage those three projects that may come before us, that anything they can do working towards these guidelines is something that we would like to see. Doesn't mean they have to be all, all the way there, but anything they can do to work towards that. Other questions or comments on this? Okay, item 10 is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and PRD zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, parcel 18.00, requested by Jared Cunningham with Catalyst Design Group. On behalf of the Rose C. Neal Revocable Trust containing 29.79 acres, the property is located on Rocky Fork, Ammaville Road.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this is a project that you all deferred on first reading, and so we did receive revised plans last week, and those are, those revised drawings and maps are in your packet. The developer did make some changes to the proposal. It has basically gone down a little bit, went from 85 lots on the 29.79 acres to 83 lots, so the density went down from 2.85 to 2.79, so a slight decrease there. The basic layout didn't change, those type of things, but there are some changes. One, the minimum lot size dimensions, all the lots before were 55 by 125, which is just a little less than 7,000 square feet as a minimum lot size. That changed to 56 by 125 for 69 of the lots, which does get you to 7,000 square feet, and then a 60 by 125 for the remaining lots, which is about a 9,000 square foot lot. They have actually given us some additional information based on that, beyond just the minimum, what the minimums are. The actual lot size breakdown, there's about 55 that are at least 7,000, 24 of them are 9,000, and then there are four 11,000 square foot lots. The lots abutting, Saddle Grove, which is the development zoned R3, are all at least 9,000 square feet, and those are the ones that, well, one of the drawings are highlighted in yellow, the other drawings had some, another breakdown with the 7, 9, and 11 on one different The house sizes, this is the other thing that changed, the minimum went from a 1,600 square feet with, including the garage, to 2,400 square feet, including the garage, with a max of 3,500 still. The other items regarding the architectural elevations did not change, access points did not change, setbacks, amenities, all those things remain the same, that's what you looked at last month, but those are the changes that were submitted as part of the discussion at your meeting last, at your last council meeting, so... And Planning Commission did review this, of course, they reviewed the original approval, but they did recommend it to you.
It says, "The proposed amenities include walking trails, covered gazebo, seating areas." Is a totlot a playground?
Small playground, yes.
Okay. Just never heard it called a totlot.
Well, it's just, it's kind of a playground, it's kind of geared toward younger kids. I mean, it's not ones that 12-year-olds will play on, it's more for the preschoolers.
Other questions?
No, I don't have any, I was looking at the map, I mean, the 9,000 along Saddle Grove, I think, is what we discussed, and I think that's, that's a nice add. I did appreciate those adjustments, and of course, the 2,400 square foot, I think Gary brought that up, so that helps, so I mean, this is closer. It's not quite where we would be in March, but it's close.
Nice change.
And I think it's a fair compromise, so...
Since we're kind of in that middle area, it makes sense.
I appreciate them working towards that. Okay, we'll move on to item 11, which is consideration of an appointment of a council member to serve as council representative on the Planning Commission with Tim, no longer serving on council. We will be appointing a council representative at our December meeting, so we'll put that on the agenda. And item 12 is consideration of an appointment of one member to the Historic Zoning Commission to serve an unexpired term ending in 2027. With the unexpected passing of Carolyn Peebles, who was our chair, she, we will need to fill that position, so if there are individuals that are interested in serving on the Historic Zoning Commission, I know we have one current application, I think he is currently sitting on another board as well, so, but if there's someone that would like to be considered, if you will go online and fill out an application, we would love to consider you for our Historic Zoning. Item 13 is consideration of appointment of one citizen member to the Planning Commission to serve an unexpired term ending in 2025. We received a resignation letter from Miranda Swift, who has done a great job on the Planning Commission, she was on our beer board in Historic Zoning, so she's worn quite a few different hats and done a really great job, but she has resigned from the Planning Commission, so if there are individuals who are interested in serving on the Planning Commission as a citizen member, you can fill out an application, and we will be appointing that in December as well. Anything, David?
Just a comment on Miranda, I want to thank her for her service, because she sat here next to me in planning, and quite often had some really good input, and so we definitely miss her from the Planning Commission, yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely. I don't see anything on my desk for other? No? Okay. Nate, anything tonight?
No ma'am.
Rex?
No ma'am.
Scott?
No ma'am.
Charles?
No ma'am.
Carl?
No ma'am.
Jeff? Tom? Kevin? Mike? Mike?
No ma'am.
Jeff? Casey?
No ma'am.
Kristy? Todd? Chief? Heather? Did you tell them they couldn't talk?
I encouraged them to talk.
Oh, it seems like it, it seems like y'all encouraged, that they were encouraged. Amber, anything tonight?
I should have let Casey do the census live.
You should have.
But that's okay, do you want to do it? I'm doing it.
Okay, all right.
So, I will go ahead and give an update on this. Of course, the special census is still going, the second mailer is officially out in the mail, it went out at the end of last week. We're starting to see some responses rolling in, but I do think the post office is holding mail this week, from what I was told by my contact over there, so we're hoping that everybody is going to complete those right before they cook their turkey, and they're going to go ahead and throw them in the mail, so they don't have to worry about it, and we're going to get all of those responses next week when we return from Thanksgiving. So, right now, we are currently at 9,300 homes that we've accounted for, and we are so close to 30,000 residents that we have counted, so still a ways to go, but we are optimistic that after Thanksgiving, we're going to put another big dent in these. We met about it last week, and we're ordering some door hangers at this time to go ahead and start preparing for firefighters to go out after the beginning of the year, and we've also come up with some ideas to kind of reach all of our demographics and make sure that they know that it's safe to respond to this, that it's confidential to respond to this, and that there's no citizenship requirement to respond and be counted as one of our residents here in Smyrna, so that's all I've got right now, and happy Thanksgiving.
Great. Dave, anything for you tonight?
Yeah, I do, before...
hit by a vehicle at Blair Road and Rock Springs Road. I've received an estimate for that, and the estimate is from RNC Construction Company, Inc. The total for this repair is approximately twelve thousand one hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. We'll go ahead and start that work as soon as as we can, but in compliance with our procurement ordinance, I need to report that to you, so I wanted to take this opportunity to do that.
Great.
Any information I missed that's relevant to that?
We will file an interest claim.
Yes, thank you.
That wasn't my question.
Yes. Good, thank you for that, Charles. Appreciate it. So, and then I got a couple of slides, I guess. So I just want to congratulate the new Smyrna Police Department Officers, Logan Bagley, Brian Hoggland, Brenton Mullis, and Pierre Romellis, for their recent penning ceremony, my first ceremony, and just want to thank the chief and his staff for for doing that, for those for those young men and women, well, in this case, all men, young men, and I wish them the best in their career, and it was great to be a part of that that initiation, so. Just want to welcome them to the to the to the department.
Is that it?
That is it.
Oh, I thought you had multiple slides, sorry. Jeffrey L.
Uh, nobody else said it, so I'm going to say it. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
It was my slide.
A hundred and sixty-one years ago, President Lincoln made a proclamation, making a national holiday.
Thank you.
That is your history lesson for the seat.
Thank you for imparting that wisdom.
You will remember it from now on.
Absolutely. So, before we move on to council updates, tonight is a bittersweet night. We have been lucky enough, some of us, to serve seventeen years with Tim Morrell. Tim chose not to run again this time. We were saddened by that, but as Tim has said, there is a time and a season for everything, and Tim felt like his time here on council was done, and we're excited for him, for whatever his next endeavor is. But we have a little something for you. And Dave, I'll let you bring it down, and Ms. Amber, will you read the proclamation?
Yes.
Okay. And then once, once she gets done reading, I'm going to ask all of council and Tim to come down as well.
Okay, here we go. Whereas, the mayor and town council of Smyrna, Tennessee hereby recognize council member Tim Morrell for his more than seventeen years of dedicated service to the Smyrna community, Tennessee town, Tennessee's town. And whereas, council member Tim Morrell, a nineteen seventy-five graduate of Smyrna High School, was first appointed to a pivotal advisory role through the town's Planning Commission in September two thousand six, significantly impacting development within the town of Smyrna. Council member Morrell was appointed as vice chairman of the Planning Commission in April two thousand twelve and has served as chairman since August twenty twenty. Whereas, council member Tim Morrell was elected in two thousand eight to the Smyrna Town Council, marking the inception of more than sixteen years in his role maintaining a close connection with the community, providing leadership and guidance, and representing the town's vision. Whereas, through his tenure, council member Tim Morrell has been directly involved in deciding upon initiatives and capital projects yielding worthy recognition for the town, including but not limited to the Fifty Best Places to Live for Families twenty twenty-three, Bloomberg TV's One of the World's Greatest for the SOAC, and Tennessee Municipal League's Excellence in Governance Award recognizing Smyrna's commitment to efficient and effective government practices that enhance quality of life, improve municipal service delivery, and leverage economic assets. And whereas, council member Tim Morrell has always recognized the importance of fiscal excellence. During his term in office, Smyrna has achieved a triple-A bond rating through Moody's Investor Service, the Government Finance Officer Association's Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, and consistently ranks among the top twenty-five percent of Tennessee cities to file the annual budget with the Comptroller within fifteen days of adoption. Now, therefore, I, Mary Esther Reed, mayor of the town of Smyrna, Tennessee, and on behalf of the town council, do hereby commend the more than seventeen years of selfless service dedicated to the Smyrna community and extend sincere best wishes to council
Tim, but I do just want to take this time to thank you for all that you've done.
member and Planning Commission Chairman, Tim Morrell, and his family.
So, if we can all go down front, so Chief Bill can do the honorary photograph. We've been through a lot in seventeen years.
[inaudible]
Thank you.
We've seen a lot of growth.
I think that deserves a round of applause.
We've been through some real tragedies during that time, but we've also been through some really exciting times. And not only do I want to thank you, but I also want to thank Donna and your family because while you were here, she was giving up family time that we have been the beneficiary of. So, to Donna and your family, thank you as well, so. Counsel, anybody else have anything they want to say?
Well, I certainly have a few things I'd like to say. I've known Tim for right at fifty-four years. We're not even fifty-four yet.
No.
Tim and I grew up as friends over on the airbase when the airbase first closed. You all have heard the story about him threatening to beat me up over a tree fort, but I won't bore you with that tonight. Tim, thank you for your integrity and your solid leadership here on the council, but, you know, over sixteen years, I think you've served on the town council, and then some more years on Planning Commission, but you're leaving on your terms, and I admire that. I think that you you felt like it was time for you to, this was the time, you know, you and Donna have been doing some traveling, and I know you're enjoying that, but the mayor said it very eloquently, you know, thank you, Donna, for a lot of reasons, but she has shared you with us, she has shared you with the town over all these years, and, you know, that's, it takes a strong person behind you to give you that support. I have that at home as well, so I think most all of us can say that there's somebody behind us that gives us the the support to be able to do this job. It's not easy, it's hard sometimes, it's actually, it's difficult sometimes, and even though we've had our, at times, this council sometimes should disagree, right? And sometimes we do. It it still works out to where everybody has mutual respect for one another, I think, and and so you're a part of that, you're a part of that whole thing, so. More than anything probably than this whole council service is the friendship, and so for me, that means as much or more than anything that you and I have ever shared. I appreciate your friendship over the years, and that will continue, just because we're not sitting here and doing this stuff together anymore, that friendship will always be there. I've often said, I mean, even during, we had elections recently, I've all, I've always said to the public, don't ever destroy friendships, just always keep things as civil as you possibly can, no matter what, because you'll look back, just as I can with all these people I serve with right here, when the time comes that they go, I can always say, you know, we've always maintained that relationship and that friendship throughout the years, and so you've been a great example of that to all of us. So, Tim, I appreciate you, you're my brother, and I love you, and thank you, and thank Donna for her service, too.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Tim and I also go back to junior high school. It's, well, first off, let me sing the praises of the class of seventy-five one more time We have a fifty-year reunion coming up next year, but, you know, when Tim decided to get on the council, of course, we'd already had him on the Planning Commission for a while, and he was easy to get along with, he made decisions which were based on fact, good thought into it all, and when he joined the council, we sat down and and had some conversations about it, and and one of the things that I that I can remember telling Tim was that don't let this job change you, don't make you into somebody that that you're not, don't become Councilman Morrell rather than Tim Morrell, and I think that he's done a very good job of that, I mean, he's the same guy he was when he joined the council. And, you know, I've served on many different councils with many different people, and there've been some that were hard to get along with, if you argued with them, by God, you were enemies for the rest of your life, and, you know, that's not the way this is supposed to be. And Tim and I have have had many arguments over the years, but the fact that I can still call him a friend, and I can still call on him when I need him, and have have the utmost respect for him, and, thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
I've been on the council for eight years, all eight years with Tim. Tim and I are on the same election cycle, so we've had to run a couple of campaigns together, and he was the first council member that I sat down with when I decided to run in sixteen, and I remember us having that lunch, and I guess now that I know HG told you that, that's one of the things that Tim told me, was don't let this job change you. So he passed that information along, I thought Tim came up with it, now I know HG did, but, but, yeah, you know, you've always been very helpful, very kind of a mentor, like, just to help helping me navigate council and how to come along as a council member, you know, the first couple of years, I felt like I was drinking from a fire hose, and it took a few years to understand what really being on a council meant, and what all time commitment it was, et cetera, and you were there to kind of help me through all of that, I appreciate that. We have the other unique opportunity, I served as your treasurer in a state campaign, which we lost by only a few votes, and, but we tried hard, and we worked hard, and we came real close, and that's, it's been a highlight of everything that I've done with the town, has been involved in that campaign, so, thanks, you're going to be missed for sure, but I know, I know where to find you on a boat in the Caribbean somewhere.
Tim, I, of course, I've been with with you the least amount on council, I know we we serve together on planning, and it's been a blessing to serve with you, it's been a blessing to to have you as a friend even more. I still look forward to our getting together on the Monday nights that we do with with the other group, and, but I I've got the utmost respect for you, and I really appreciate all you've done for me, and all you've done for this town, and I just, I just wish you the best, and I know, I know you're going to have a great time.
Thank you.
So I'll be rounding it out.
Yes, I'm on the same election cycle as you and and Steve, and so I can say that it's been a privilege to serve with you, and you also have mentored me and helped me in this seat, so I want to thank you for all that you've done to serve the town of Smyrna. Thank you for your friendship, and it has been a pleasure to serve with you.
Thank you. May I?
Absolutely.
I hope you guys are around at my funeral.
We already said it, we're done.
I do, too.
See, I didn't say it.
You know, I I shared with you guys earlier, Smyrna saved me, Smyrna saved my family. You know, growing up, we we transferred quite a bit around and landed in in Smyrna. Your mom was one of the first teachers I had who offered me sage advice about girl issues that I, apparently I didn't know I was having, that I was, but it instilled upon me that this was home. Mark was one of the first people I met, and and even though I was going to beat him up, he was.
Bully.
Yeah, I was a bully. Turned into be a lifelong friend, and I love you too, brother.
Thank you.
But what that did, when when you go through that experience in life and you find home, you know, even after I graduated Smyrna High School and stayed in the area for a while, and and went to MTSU, and later ended up in Franklin, and then Texas, this was always home. So, when Donna and I got together and married, there wasn't even a discussion of where home was, or where home would be, it was here, and it's been my pleasure to do so, and it's been my pleasure to give back to my home. And, you know, I don't like the titles, and and I never want to be an elected, you know, political guy, I'm just somebody who wants to be a servant for a place that I love, and that's how I've tried to, you know, conduct myself here and on planning, as somebody that wanted to be a servant to a a home, not a town, but a home that gave, you know, so much to me. You mentioned Donna. My goodness, I know what it's like to have a good woman and a good wife and a good partner behind you, because I wouldn't be sitting here if it weren't for her, and I know that. She doesn't have to remind me, I know that, and I know birthdays, anniversaries, presents, Dawn.
That's right.
So, that's done. You guys out here, employees and employees at home, you make it easy for us, even when it's hard, you make it easy, and there's never, never the amount of words that I could to, that I could tell you guys to show my appreciation for all that you do, because I see on a daily basis where you go above and beyond that eight to four, seven to three, nine to five, you know, three to eleven, eleven to seven, you go above and beyond that on so many different occasions, and for that, I appreciate each and every one of you out here, and want to let the town know how fortunate we are to have this group of employees. Dave, it's been quick, but I I I know that we have a good town manager in place now with you, I do, and I'm I'm confident of that, and that makes me, you know, it makes it a little easier when you're stepping away. And for everybody up here, we haven't always agreed, we've disagreed, sometimes we've really disagreed, but here's the one thing that I can say about this group, there's not an agenda, there's nothing hidden, other than wanting the very best for this town, and we all have a little bit of a different idea of how we get there, but it's not, it's not a person putting themselves ahead of what the purpose of sitting up here is, and that purpose is to make this, the town, the very best, the very best, and for each and every one of you, I appreciate that. Mayor, I've had the privilege of serving under elected mayors, appointed mayors, elected mayors, elected mayors, but I want to tell you this in all sincerity, you're the hardest working person I know in your, that's been in your position for this town, and I don't think people really realize the sacrifice that you've put forward, and I do. I, when you call me sometimes at nine or ten o'clock at night to say, hey, you guys, what do you think about, you know, whatever it is with the town going on, or say we've had an issue, or we've had a problem, you're working, and that the impact that you've made at the state level, to bring a lot of things here, it goes unrecognized, you're not that kind of person, but I want to publicly recognize you for that.
Thank you, that means a lot.
You're welcome. So, with that, it's not, it's not goodbye, it's, I'm not going- There's not an agenda. There's nothing hidden other than wanting the very best for this town, and we've all have a little bit of a different idea of how we get there, but it's not, it's not a person putting themselves ahead of what the purpose of sitting up here is, and that purpose is to make this town the very best, the very best. And for each and every one of you, I appreciate that. Mayor, I've had the privilege of serving under elected mayors, appointed mayors, elected mayors, elected mayors, but I want to tell you this in all sincerity. You're the hardest working person I know in your, that's been in your position for this town, and I don't think people really realize the sacrifice that you put forward, and I do. I, when you call me sometimes at nine or ten o'clock at night to say, "Hey, you guys, what do you think about, you know, whatever it is with the town going on," or say, "We've had an issue," or "We've had a problem," you're working, and the impact that you've made at the state level to bring a lot of things here, it goes unrecognized. You're not that kind of person, but I want to publicly recognize you for that.
Thank you. That means a lot.
You're welcome. So with that, it's not, it's not goodbye. It's, I'm not going anywhere. I'll continue to serve in whatever capacity this town needs me other than being elected. It's time for that chapter to end, and it's, you know, Mark, you said, "Doing it my way." This is, this is my way. And again, from the bottom of my heart, to everyone here, to everyone in the town, thank you, and I appreciate it.
We just have a little bit left of business to take care of. Raquel, I know you have some slides tonight.
One is actually...
Check it out.
Ah, look.
Yeah.
We actually switched, so Chris, we felt that one was more appropriate for HG than for me.
HG, so can we move forward one?
Or he can do that one first. Either way, I took the next.
Okay, we'll go ahead.
Okay, there we go. There we go.
There you go.
All right. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Even though you've been told a couple of times, it's my official turn to tell you. So we are grateful to serve our community. So butt note, Smyrna Town Hall will be closed on Thursday, November the twenty-eighth and Friday, November the twenty-ninth in observance of the holiday, and will resume normal business hours on Monday.
December?
It says November the twenty-fifth. Sorry, that's why I stopped. December the second. Please also help us to thank our fire, police, water treatment, and wastewater treatment personnel for continuing to serve our community during this holiday, and I would like to wish everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving holiday with your family, and thank you to the town for all that you do so that the citizens can be safe during this time. And that's all I have.
HG?
Okay. Everybody knows about Black Friday, and the thing about Black Friday is that it doesn't mean that you necessarily have to go to the mall or anywhere like that. You can practice that in Smyrna and shop local. But then Saturday is another special day, and that is the Shop Small. That's where you step into the independent businesses, and when you shop in an independent business, it keeps sixty-eight percent of every dollar in the town of Smyrna, whether it be going through our tax coffers or whether it's just returned to our community from the local employees spending their money here. Shop small. Shop small Saturday. It needs to be as big as Black Friday. Also, I hope everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving. Hope everybody is safe, and one more time, Tim gonna miss you.
Oh, thank you.
Tim?
I'm just going to end it with happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Great. Jerry?
Okay. Tomorrow night is actually one of my favorite things that we do every year. We are looking forward to this year's tree lighting ceremony tomorrow night. We're going to kick off the fun for the holiday season. The Christmas lighting ceremony will be held tomorrow night, the twenty-sixth, at the Smyrna Depot. It's going to be from six to eight o'clock. There's a visit from Santa, so you can get free pictures with him and Mrs. Claus, courtesy of the Smyrna Fire and Police Department. So like I said, it's just, everybody seems to have a great time when they come out. I guess the question, Mike, are we having the snow machine?
We'll be snowing.
All right. It's going to be snowing tomorrow night, so we look forward to that. Anyway, hope to see you out there tomorrow night. Today was my daughter-in-law Jamie's birthday, so happy birthday to Jamie. Kevin, I do want to say thank you to you and your group for this, putting this together on the, the work's been done over the last six months. I know there's been a lot of things, and I look forward to seeing, and hopefully it's going to make some changes that's going to be for the better, so thank you. And happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and as HG said, Tim, again, appreciate you, buddy, and you enjoy it.
Steve?
Excellent. I also have one slide. It's winter, and comes that, with that comes ice skating, in this case, without the ice. We have our seasonal ice skating rink that is just about ready to open down at SOAC. This is the latest addition. I think we added it, was it last year, Mike, we added it? Yeah, for Parks and Rec, and it's right there beside the SOAC. The hours of operation are a little different. Saturday, November thirtieth through December twenty-second, it will be Friday and through Sundays only, so Friday night, four to eight, Saturday, twelve to eight, and Sundays, one to six. Once winter break schedule starts for the school system, December twenty-sixth through January fifth, it will be open Tuesday through Sunday. Tuesday through Saturday is twelve to eight, and Sunday, one to six. They will remain closed on Mondays. It's five dollars for children's and seniors and seven dollars for adults. So come on out, enjoy the skating rink. It's an interesting synthetic surface that is very slippery. We got the opportunity to walk on it last year when we first got it and wasn't real sure what to expect from it, but it felt just like ice, so come on out. Happy Thanksgiving to the town and everyone. I hope you get to enjoy some time with your family and loved ones. Enjoy the few days of rest and spend your money on Shop Small Saturday. That's it.
I have a slide. I think it'll pop up. Yeah, there we go. So Jerry and I had the opportunity to go out to Lowe's Pro Supply out off the interstate and just kind of celebrate with them their board cutting, of which I don't know, Jerry, if we got to cut the board or see the board. When we got there, there was a lot of people, and they were all spread out, so we were eating lunch, and I think they cut the board. But nonetheless, we talked to a lot of the people.
And Todd wasn't with you?
Well, I don't think Todd knew about it. Obviously, Todd didn't know he would have been there, but, so congratulations to Lowe's Pro Supply for their ribbon cutting, their board cutting.
That's a really good picture of you guys. Lovebirds there.
Well, thank you. We were all alone with full stomachs. I got to admit, Jerry and I sat there at the table while we were eating our lunch, and we looked around and said, "We're missing something here," and we got a little tickled about it, but nonetheless, congratulations to them. Also, I noticed that Lisa Winters downstairs in the Echo Health Area had been awarded Certified Health Education Specialist. Good for Lisa. I know her because every now and then I'm down there, and so congratulations to Lisa. I also saw where Steve Dawson was announcing his retirement from the town after seventeen years, doing plans examination, things like that. I think that's correct. I thought I saw an email just a little while ago. Is that right? Okay. I asked Mayor if it's okay to say anything, so Steve, if it's not, it's her fault. Also, Mark Hardy lost his mom, and so we want to give our condolences to Mark. Not to forget, Jerome's here. Jerome's back here on the back row. Jerome is our councilman-elect. He'll be sworn in, I think, December the tenth, if I'm not mistaken. Is that right, Jerome? Congratulations again. He's actually the one that's coming in as Tim is exiting, and we look forward to working with Jerome, but Tim, again, you know how I feel about you, and I just appreciate all that you've done for the town and the way you've represented your family. You've been awesome, so all the best.
Before I move into slides so I don't forget, Jerome will be sworn in, but Raquel and Steve will also be sworn in again, and we'll do that at four o'clock on the tenth, so, and it is open to the public, so anyone who would like to attend, we encourage you to come and hear the swearing-in ceremony. The Public Sector Technology Summit, the town recently hosted this at the Smyrna Event Center. It was presented by the GNRC IT Directors Roundtable. For those of you that don't know, the GNRC serves as the Regional Planning and Economic Development Agency for a thirteen-county area in Middle Tennessee, and is responsible for facilitating and coordination between local, state, and federal partners to direct investments into economic and community development, transportation, infrastructure, and social services for older adults. This is also where the, what we know as the MPO, which is now called the Transportation Policy Board, falls under this umbrella. I am lucky enough to be treasurer on GNRC, and we have a lot of great things going on across the Middle Tennessee region, but Carl, thanks for bringing that to the town center, and I think you all had a great day.
Well, thank you for being here as well.
Great. Next, I was lucky enough to get to participate in the mayor's panel at Youth Leadership Rutherford, and they toured several places, but one of those was the SOAC, and if this is any indication of what our young people are going to be like coming up, we are, we're in good hands and in good shape, so it was a pleasure to spend a little over an hour with them, with the other mayors. For some of you, you probably heard, our, the Blue Angel was back in town. Blue Angel number seven arrived at the Smyrna Airport last week, and they were in town for the winter planning session for the 2025 Great Tennessee Airshow, which will be here in Smyrna on June seventh and eighth, so we're excited to see them back at the Smyrna Airport. Want to remind you to save the date for the town's annual Christmas Parade tradition. The forty-ninth Annual Town of Smyrna Christmas Parade and Food Drive will be held Sunday, December eighth, 2024, at 2:00 PM. It will be on Lowry Street. We want to remind you, those that are participating in the parade or those along the parade route, to don't forget to bring the non-perishable food items. We will have a float in the parade that will be collecting those items. How many are we up to now?
One hundred and eight.
A hundred and eight applicants this year, so we were a little worried having to change the weekend that we might be short, and now, so I would say, if you think you want to be in the parade, you need to get your application in. Is there a chance we'll cut off the application deadline?
There's a possible chance.
Possible chance, so if you want to be in the parade, make sure to get your application in. And also condolences to Mark Hardy. I will tell you all, Mark's mom passed away. Mike, what day did we have our park board meeting? Last Tuesday, and so she passed away that morning, and Mark was at our parks board meeting that night for the selection of the, and we didn't have that. I totally forgot about that. The Kenneth Coen Victory Lifetime Achievement Award winner was Jean Hardiman, so we are super excited, very much well-deserved, and our young leader was last, Ms. Payne?
Jocelyn.
Jocelyn Payne. So we are excited that they will be in the parade, and that's why we started doing it in November, is so that they can ride in the Christmas Parade in December, but Heather, don't let me forget, we'll get a slide up of them at the next meeting, so. Tim, anything else to come before us?
Be careful if it snows on Saturday.
Yes.
Buy your bread and...
Local.
Bread and milk, local.
That's right.
And be kind.
And be kind. To each one of you out there, I want to wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving. We are blessed to live in this community. Many of us in this room and on TV live a very blessed life. Not all of those around us do, so remember to give a hand up to those neighbors around us who don't. Some are not as fortunate as the rest of us. So to each one of our employees, I hope you all have a very happy Thanksgiving as well. So if nothing else, we're adjourned.